Come to order. Roll call of commissioners.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Commissioner Orleans.
Here. Steve, we get you to say the invocation?
Yeah, if I could everybody to follow your heads, please. Um, dear my father, just help us to have the courage and the wisdom to do the right thing for the folks of Grasset County. At our meeting today, help us to uh make good decisions financially and as we look into the future of who's going to be our uh county administrator. Help us to make the right decisions and the right choices. Bless all the men and women that are in uniform, whether that's police and fire and rescue or our military that uh is becoming ever more uh necessary in this world we live in, just please bless our country that they can we can get things back opened up and decisions being made in Washington and this uh we ask this in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Amen.
You have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes. Um, I wanted to add um Traverse City.
Now we look at J six, J seven.
Did you say six or seven?
Seven. Any more additions or deletions?
From the agenda as presented. The poor.
Moved by George, supported by Tim to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brief public comment. Consideration of the consent calendar.
The consent calendar.
Worked by George, supported by Steve to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Snay. Motion carried. Administrators report.
Yes, sir. I the county received the program review report from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle, regarding the soil erosion and sedimentation control program. Uh, that review found six violations in six program areas or elements uh that don't meet the requirements. Uh, that's under review. Uh, they're gonna ask for a response by November twenty fourth. And I say a response is basically a corrective action plan. Um, clearly there were some things askew there. Everything from permits, the de-watering, et cetera. Uh. Anyways, we're getting into that. Needs some improvement, clearly. Um. Last Monday met with the appointed and elected department heads. Spoke about the budget, outlined the challenges ahead. Also the hiring of the financial services director and the uh anticipated start date of October twenty seventh. And I ended just reviewed the process for hiring of the uh new re- new administrator. Um. Uh, then, and also at that meeting, I highlighted the uh trainings that were upcoming uh on Wednesday of last week, uh referenced the uh accounting. Uh, we had two sessions, one at nine, one at three. They were held primarily targeting the use of the BSNA's financial system for tracking budget and preparing and coding of expenditures. And with difficulty trending out, so you know, items within the previous budget and hoping to make some progress there. That was reasonably well attended. Um, was a bit disappointed, but nonetheless, um I'm sure when Mr. uh Morgenberg starts, there's gonna be other opportunities. There's some training that's definitely needed across the board in some of these areas. Yes.
Is this training that can be handled by our in-house staff?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not something we have to hire BNSNA to come in. This is all county level stuff to get everybody up to speed on.
Mary Ann conducted it. Well, they gotta show up.
Yeah.
Um. And then I attended a meeting at Ethicott City Hall. I think I notified you that the sheriff provided them with a letter opting out of the agreement for law enforcement enforcement services. Um, that concludes my report.
Yep. George, do you have anything?
Well, I got a report. I was and went to England and he sent me back, so I didn't didn't get caught. I've been doing anything against the law over there, but it's always a good time. And recently visited my friends I haven't seen for six years, but and it was all good and we went around, did some things and yeah, came back safe, some. So, all I can say.
Tim.
Well, I went to Traverse City uh for the MAC conference. Uh. I sat in on a mental health meeting. Uh, pretty interesting. The the guy that talked was his son is uh schizophrenic. Um. You know, just what they go through. Uh. We could save a lot of a lot, you know, a lot of people are incarcerated that are mentally ill. And uh if we, their point was if there is like a crisis intervention team, uh we could save money and possibly cool down situations and keep them out of jail.
Cheaper to keep them out of the hundred thousand dollars per person to treat it ahead of time, correct?
Oh, Steve, you you know more how to do this. You
Mm-hmm.
On calls and uh you
There's a need.
Situations.
We we have deteriorated immensely as a as a society and a state, we failed miserably as far as I'm, I think that nations failed miserably in our mental health. Um, the people who are workers in it are amazing people and they do the best they can. There aren't enough of them. We don't support them enough. And you can't just have people with walking around being able to commit crimes and think you can send them to
Kill our government is willing to come down to the fact that they made a big mistake in the eighties.
Absolutely.
And all those mental institutions, I agree, would be money ahead.
Yep. We've just, I feel bad for, you know, that gentleman whose son is a schizophrenic. That's a tough. You know, that's a tough situation to be in for his family, for his son, for everybody, because um, when they're having their real episode and law enforcement gets involved, it's it's not.
It can be a bad outcome.
Yeah, I mean, it can be a very bad, it can be a good outcome, it can be a very bad outcome, but it's not fun for anybody involved. I mean, the the parents or the the person is is just not a good turnout. But that was
Hey, um, you said on a a guy named Jim that was in the CIA Central Intelligence Agency. I don't know why anybody would wanna do that, because they tell their family, their kids, their parents, what they do. And if they're caught, uh, well, they're all overseas. And if they're caught and espionage, they're they're really punished. Uh. And uh well, I mean and then oh, A A and I, artificial intelligence. That's gonna change things, radically. And uh we need to be aware of that. A a county uh needs to be aware of that changes and things like that. They said that not going, it's not going to replace humans, but humans will replace other humans without AI. Well, that's that's replacing humans. Uh. Uh, need someone who judge whether AI will be a tool for county government. The big beautiful bill gave power to states as far as AI. So, a- anyway, it's something that we should be trained on, stuff like that. And uh uh, that's
Steve, what do you got?
Um, on the seventeenth, Wednesday the seventeenth, they attended our Parks and Recreation meeting. Um, things going well. They're winding down for the season, kinda talking about uh capital improvements, things like that, that they're gonna be working on, major projects. Um, on the eighteenth, I went to Washington Township's meeting. Um, they just went through normal business there, paying the bills, um, and will uh, they're finishing up things with their hall. They're gonna put in some new sidewalks, new uh deck to get out to the sidewalks or kinda connects two doors to one handicap ramp, that kinda stuff. Um. Friday, the nineteenth, Conservation District meeting. Um. It was a interesting meeting because they had to have enough for a quorum. The quorum was there for a short period of time, then somebody had to leave and another one came. And anyhow, it was interesting. They they managed to get all the business that they had to get done, done. Um, but uh that was an interesting meeting. Um. On Monday, the twenty second, Fulton Township, they um at that time did not have a new um uh township supervisor, but they have a new township supervisor now that's been appointed. That was one of their trustees. Um, Bob, uh I just had his name in my head. Baxter, Robert Baxter. It's like I just thought of it and I forgot before I got sent. Uh, but uh Bob Baxter, you might be familiar with Bob. He's been to some of our meetings. He um also sits on the Veterans Affairs Committee. Um, and is longtime resident of Fulton Township. Uh, and the twenty third, I was here for the COAM negotiations, the twenty fourth, Wednesday. Um, first Health Department meeting I was at without George being there, so.
Well, I imagine you got along great.
Got along just fine without George. Then we had a meeting after that about uh cause I'm on the Personnel Committee, um, where we did uh our annual review of the head. Um, Liz Maddock, um. She's doing well. It's gonna be, she's gonna be, some of this can be a tough one to replace when when that runs amazing, all the different things that that woman has brought in. Um, on the twenty fifth, we had our special board meeting here. And then I also attended the MAC conference in Traverse City on the thirtieth of uh September. Uh, we had to be up there. One o'clock was our first session. Um. Different things than uh what Tim went to, went to a thing on uh pipelines, where they talked a lot about pipeline safety. It pretty much focused on um line five and uh Embridge's attempts to get that built and where it stands at right now. Um, and the importance of that actually getting done for, it's amazing how much of our propane and uh and fuel come through that on a day-to-day basis. There's a lot of people who don't realize, but I didn't, I actually didn't realize that it comes to the straits of Mackinac as one pipeline splits into two as it goes under, then merges back together on the opposite side of the um, just uh, it's an interesting part of that helps some of what with the safety too, because they all have shut offs and you know, if one was happened to one part of it, they can shut it off and it's not the full volume. So it's interesting how that's all set up. Uh, it's very interesting about how that tunnel will be and what it will be. It's really interesting to uh what that would be like and it'll be more than just that pipeline that goes through there. There'll be a lot of things that run through there if they ever get this built. Um, it'll open up uh power, phone, data, all that stuff.
The safety factors in in Kelkenwood.
Yeah, absolutely.
Put that in there. It's all encased and if anything ever happens, it's right there.
Yeah.
Fix it.
Um. Also attended, um on health insurance, I sent a thing to uh Ryan and Sheila and Stephanie, I believe I I corresponded with them. That was uh put on by Blue Cross Blue Shield. I found it very, very helpful and it talked about how our skyrocketing um health insurance rates affecting everybody. Um. Some of their recommendations and I've, I actually sent the stuff to the county for Blue Cross is willing to come to the county, because like I told them, I'm one of five votes to approve these things. I don't even have health insurance through the county. None of us do on this board currently. That'll change in twenty seven. However, the employees of the county are the ones who dictate how much that goes up or down. It's how much you use the system. And so, you know, to sit and listen to that and how um society has changed demographics, the the change in ages of people and not bothering to have a regular physician, that they go to the regular physician for their things and how they use emergency rooms and they use emergency rooms instead of uh clinic ouch clinics and things like that. And I mean, every one of those steps adds, if you go to an ouch clinic or a twenty-four hour clinic versus going to a doctor, it's way more money. If you go to the ER, it skyrockets the amount of money. The amount of tests that have to be done because of liability. This doctor doesn't know you at all, never maybe seen you before in your life versus a doctor that gets to know you and knows your family history. They know what tests they need to run, so those tests get run. If you're in an emergency room, they're running.
In a doctor.
But
I was sexually getting into mine.
Exactly. Yeah, but that's, you know, that's the 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 secret to this equation is use the healthcare system for the healthcare system that it is. That's the way the United States healthcare system is set up. It's not set up to go to the emergency room and have to sit there and wait eight hours because you stubbed your toe. You you should be able to deal with some of these things without emergency care. Um, but anyhow, it was really interesting and I encouraged our county to try and set something up where they actually come and talk to our hundred and sixty some employees. Because if they quit using and abusing some parts of the system, our rates will come back down because we're not considered a high. Um, and then I think as um things change in the drug industry, the pharmaceuticals, um, you know, this weight loss drug stuff has gone way, it's very popular, but it's very expensive. Um, you also have uh some of these specialized treatment, if it gets approved for somebody, I mean, some of those, the doses, each dose is very, very, very expensive. Now, if you need it, that's that's, that's the course of action. That's that's what the system is for. But we need to make sure that we're using it um appropriately and effectively so that we're not uh skyrocketing our healthcare. Um, other things, I agree with Tim. We had some some good speeches and and interesting sessions to go to. Uh, but those were the ones that I found. The insurance one probably was the most interesting. Went to the, how do you recover after the disaster up north? Very, very, very devastating and very sad for those people. Some of those communities lost sixty to eighty years of timber in one day. Um, you know, there's theoretically young kids who live there in certain areas of some of those counties, Presquill County. It'll be their entire lifetime for their area returns to what their area is known for. Which is timber production of, and then how it's affecting their economy, because there's so much of it that's glutted into the system right now. They have so much that they don't have to do with it. I mean, Dave is in there with me. They don't have a clue what they're gonna do with it. Jan, you were in there. I mean, the uh the spoils, with just huge, huge masses of these spoils that need to be ground up into mulch and stuff. And if you don't get it taken care of, it starts to deteriorate. When it's deteriorating, it in attracts um insects.
Yes.
There are bugs that, you know, and every year it seems like the state of Michigan is affected by another insect. That a lot of them we don't even hear about that come in from other countries that are causing devastation to our, one of our most largest crops. I mean, living in Grasset County, we think corn and soybeans, but when you think of the whole state of Michigan, timber is
product.
Is huge. So um, it it was very interesting. I found that very interesting as well. So. Sorry, I took so long with that. It's my, I have a busy time.
Dan.
Okay, I will add on to his. Um, I did find that everything interesting, especially up in the UP. One of the things I I thought interesting was not a lot of counties were there this time. There's probably half the amount of people there that's usually there. Um, and I'm assuming that a lot of it was up in the UP and stuff. It's, I mean, they were having some real hard times. Uh, also, when he talked about the um the gas and the pipes that they're putting in, we did get invited that if we would like to go up there and take a tour. Um, we could do that. It would be maybe a day thing, go up early in the morning, take the tour and then come back. And I thought that would be really interesting. It's not every day that we would get that offer or not just anybody could do that. So that's something to put it to put into maybe this next summer or even yet this year. Also, um, I did take and go downtown to get some gas and I went, decided I've, I've been up there many, many times to conferences, but never took the time to go and take the tour to where they, they, I don't know what you call it, where they kept people years ago that didn't have special properties. Home, yes.
Yeah.
Salem, yes. I was just
Well, it's marketplace now. It's, it's up and nice.
I couldn't believe, well, they're still, they said a guy had bought it and he's remodeling it into apartments. But still, I couldn't get over how big it was. And then also I was told that they used to put, they didn't have enough people working there, so they would put kids in the floor and and shut them in there. And I just couldn't believe all the stuff that happened many years ago. And I guess it was a good thing they closed it down, but in some ways, it was very beautiful, the the structure of it and whoever built it many years ago. But yet it was sort of a sad thing too to to drive through there. And it was, it was big to just drive around through it. And I just thought, wow, this, it held, it had to have held thousands of people because it's so huge. And it was, I think it's three stories high. And plus there is a basement to it, so it was, it was really big. And um, the other thing was, um, I enjoyed all of it. I enjoyed the I enjoy all of it because you're listening to people from other, you know, things that they, like CIA. I was really infused with him because of the fact that he told how he became how he got the job and then all the years that he spent there and different places that he went. And it was, I came away with that he must have been able to learn foreign languages. It must have been very easy for him because he did say he knew several languages.
Seven different ways.
Seven, was it seven different languages? And so to be able to pick that up, I mean, you you gotta be able to have a photographic memory. But anyway, um, and today he's retired. And just a very interesting, he put a lot of humor to it at the beginning, but at the very end, he did tell us that we are going to be invaded by China. It's just a matter of when. And it will be the infrastructure of our country because they are into everything. They're in our computers, our TVs, our cell phones. And this is how, they know everything that we're doing. And today we put so much stuff on our phones and our our banking. And I just heard just recently that don't do this, um don't get your banking off these phones because they're going in and they're able to take all your money. And so, um, one of them, I can't think of it. I don't put my money on phones and stuff like that, but kids put this, um do you know what you guys call it? It's for PayPal, that they put money, they take money and transfer it into PayPal. And they're able to go back into their bank to see how much they have. And um, so anyway, just little things like that. You come away with learning a a lot of stuff, everyday things. But also I did go to Alma City meeting just before I left. And um I think that's about it. The co- oh, yeah. And the conference was it was, I have something more to talk about, but I'll wait until um it's my turn at the very end.
Okay, I I went to the community picnic in Riverdale. And in spite of it being advertised in the Grasset County Herald, there was only twelve people there and two of them lived in Vestaburg, so.
Oh.
And I I went to the the Bytes and Beer in Alma. It was a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce and the Young Professionals. That was kinda cool. There were a lot of people there.
Yes.
And um, yeah. MAC has been pretty well discussed, so. Moving on to new business. Consideration to approve the contract for equalization services.
All right, um. I trust it's self-explanatory. The uh Mr. Bengal has been uh reviewing uh the deed and other necessary uh forms that are recorded and he's been doing it a piece rate at seven dollars a deed or whatever the document is that needs to be reviewed. Um, rather than add to the contract, I just took out the previous language. He's asked to just set a flat rate of uh thirteen five. We discussed that to seem like a reasonable amount. It is a part of keeping the assessment rules correct and accurate as possible. And I would ask that you approve the contract with Bengal's assessing services for ten one twenty-five through nine thirty twenty-seven.
I saw move that we approved the contract with Bengal. Let's see, Bengal Assessing Service, um for thirteen five a year for the period from ten one twenty-five through nine thirty of twenty twenty-seven.
Oh.
Or, I'm sorry. It's midnight in my head.
Moved by Steve, supported by George to enter into a contract. What's Beagle assessing for this fiscal year? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, consideration to approve a generator for the Commission on Aging in the Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, the uh budget resolution requires any uh project in that plan to be uh submitted to the board for au- authorization. Um, last year it was budgeted, I believe, at twenty thousand. Fortunately, we didn't get around to that. It becomes prized, but any event Spicer drafted, uh, worked on, helped with the RFP, kind of the specifications for the generator, be it gas. It'll take care of the whole place, the freezers, refrigeration and all of that stuff. Came in at a hundred and thirty thousand, as he's noted, they uh did follow up and vetted it, uh you know, to make certain that they understood everything that happened and any other questions. Twenty-six, twenty-four to twenty-six lead time for both specific generators getting in them here and everything, but um I think we're ready to go to get that project online. And I tried to beat into the heads of these folks, and you got these projects, you need to start calendaring those things out now because you wait till midsummer or whatever next year to try to get something going. Get it on the schedule, get it figured out, so you can anyways, um, we'd like to ask for authorization to proceed.
I saw move that we approve Spicer Group's recommendation for the county to use CNR Electric. The amount of, or do you need the COA budget of one thirty? Or do you need both numbers in there?
Either one.
All right, uh, for the Commission on Aging to authorize a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of their twenty-five, twenty-six Capital Improvement Plan uh for the new uh generator that will take care of their entire facility.
I'll second that.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan, to authorize Commission on Aging to enter into the bid, the Spicer Group for a hundred and thirty-three, hundred and thirty thousand for a generator to run the whole operation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Consideration to set a special meeting to interview candidates for the county administrator.
I move that we set October sixteenth at nine AM to interview candidates.
Nine AM for the special meeting to begin?
Special meeting, yeah.
It's asked to be, actually it has to be a meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moved by Tim, supported by Steve, to set a special meeting to interview candidates for the county administrator on October the sixteenth, which is a week from this Thursday at nine o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Clarification for the clerks compensating for voting elections.
So I guess Mary Ann from Woodhill just wanted clarification that the compensation that you guys have awarded is continued for every year. That you guys have awarded is continued for every year. And not just the one-time compensation.
Well, since I was involved in that, I'd say yes, that, that would be the. That was probably the, our intent, it was not stated.
It wasn't stated clearly. Yeah, given the history, we want to be certain that was intended.
Well, that, that's what I meant.
It's also, it would be.
Probably, it was probably meant, but not stated. And that's a lot, a lot of times that's the way we do things unfortunately, but.
Yeah.
For the record, um, we didn't, none of us caught it in the minutes, but I actually made that motion for. And uh, Commissioner Gay seconded it, but it says motion by Gay, seconded by Gay. So it would have been um, motion by Sopsey, seconded, and Angie did confirm that by listening back to the actual minutes, correct Angie?
Yes.
So just for the record, it's out there. Um. But you need a motion for us to continue that?
Yeah.
And make it a year to year basis.
Only usual basis.
Okay. The other one, I saw move that the decision to approve a twenty thousand dollar per year. Spread out over each of the twenty-six paychecks or pay periods, excuse me, um. For coming election reimbursement. To the clerk, sorry.
In here, second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, supported by Jan, to clarify the clerk's compensation for the quoting for the elections. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Motion carried.
Clear as mud now, right?
Right. Consideration to appoint Board of Canvas, two seats available. One Chuck Murphy and one Democrat Nancy O'Brien for four-year terms.
So this requires a letter from the chairs. For the political parties, and so we received a letter from Chuck Murphy, who is the chair for the Republican Party. He is sitting on the Board of Canvas and would like to continue. And then um, Christine Freestone gave us a letter still at requesting that Nancy O'Brien. And uh, Susan Hunter, but Susan's term is not up, but Nancy O'Brien is.
Yes.
So we just need to appoint those two for the next four-year term.
I'll make a motion that we um, elect Mr. Murphy and, and Mrs. Freestone.
No.
No.
It's O'Brien.
O'Brien, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
O'Brien. Um, to the Board of. And let's.
Or. By Jan, supported by Steve, to appoint Chuck Murphy and Nancy O'Brien. For seats on the Board of Canvassers for your term. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. And they need to, consideration to appoint. Uh, one person for a three-year term on the Department of Human Services.
Yep, so this is Mary Mooney. She's the only one who applied. I did post it in the newspaper and Mary was the only one that sent in her application, with that petition.
I move that we appoint Mary Port. To a, a three-year term for Department of Human Services.
Or. Move by Tim, supported by George, to appoint Mary Mooney for a three-year term. What was it? Human Services, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Number seven.
Okay, that's me. Um, okay, I uh. I actually called Tim, asked him if he wanted to ride with me. And what I did is like, the only thing I had to look at was on my phone. And when I pulled it up, this is September the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, October the second. I didn't even see that on this. I just looked at the September twenty, twenty-nine. So anyway, I called him and I picked him up um, Monday morning. And usually, I gotta tell you, it always starts on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. That's why I was surprised. Uh, and they did have some, a lot of people were there on Monday, coming in on Monday. But anyway, when we got there, there was no reservations for us, so we had to, we asked if we could sign in. And they let us. So actually, we were there three nights instead of two nights. And so when I talked with Becky, she said that I had to get the okay from the, from us here. That it's okay to go ahead and pay for the third night. One thing is that we did save money because Tim didn't drive, I drove. And then also Dave rode with Steve, which saved extra money. It's about, well, I put over three hundred, well, actually I had four hundred, four hundred point nine miles on my car, but I only put. Three hundred and, I think, three hundred and thirty down. I didn't put them all down because I went to the tour and got gas and. And I didn't want to do that, so. Uh, and then also we got lost once, um, went up, so I, I just took off the miles for that. So anyway, I'd like to make a motion that, that you would cover. It would be Tim and mine both. Uh, an extra night there, which is, they did give us a deal on it.
How, how much was it then?
Two, well, it would have been two, well, they didn't take the taxes off, so Becky had to call. And have them take the tax off of it, yeah. I thought, remember you were right next to me and you, you gave her that information.
I emailed it to him as I C C'd the county as well, so that she knew that they had it, because it should have covered. Your room, uh, Tim's room, Dave's room, and I know it covered mine because mine, it came off of mine.
Uh, I, when I looked at mine, it came off, but she said it didn't come off. So she, I don't really know what it is because I left her the, I think it's around two hundred, two hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think the rooms were two twenty-five and then there's a. There was two fees associated with um. Uh, there's a. We were just talking about it, uh. There's like a tourism tax because of the county you're in and then a, a hotel gratuity or some kind of tax thing.
Yeah, well, I left him a tip.
Yeah.
Um, both the, uh, the nights I was there. There was two different people that, but they, they don't even clean your room until you leave. So, but I still left a tip with them, but, and I see that afterwards that they left a. So anyway, I made a motion. Does anybody want to second that?
So, how, okay. How did uh?
I'll let you see what I had, so you can see that.
Yeah, because I'm like, the things that, I looked back on all our emails and I, all the emails.
This is the only thing I had. This is the only thing I had. It's this thing, or you can, you can make it smaller and you can see. Let me do this. When I did it, I did it just like this. That's the only thing I had right there.
Very pleased to inform you of details. So. It, it says that on there. I, my agenda, obviously, I'd said that it didn't have to be, because actually. Um, you had thought at one time we had to go up on Monday too, because you were coming back from the trip that you'd been on. But it was actually the second, or not the second, the, this Tuesday that we didn't go up, so. Um, I can, I can see how it happened, but um.
But there was people coming in when we got there.
Oh, I'm sure. All the executive people and all the people, and they have those executive meetings that happen ahead of time. That's.
No, there was other people just coming in that, um, I mean, you gotta stop and think, people, I don't.
If you're traveling from the west end of the U P, or to the Detroit area, you're not gonna drive up there, you know, and, and be there that day, so.
But I gotta tell you, we left that, we left at about seven thirty in the morning. We didn't get there till almost two in the afternoon, but that's because we needed to stop, use the bathroom, have a bite to eat. And then also the, on one of the signs, it pointed us the wrong direction. We go way out of our way, had to turn around and come back. And um, anyway, yeah, I mean. Who, who, I would have left probably at five in the morning. I'd known we had to be there the next day. But I think you had to be there at eleven the next day, right? Eleven.
One, one in the afternoon is when it started.
Okay.
So. Tim, you were the other one that was affected by this.
Yeah.
What's your feelings on it? I mean, you're, you were the other one affected by.
Oh, pain in the guilty. I was an accountant. Hey, uh, but I don't, I, I want, I didn't want to go up there by myself.
Well, that's, that's the irrelevant part. The, the part is the, the room part. That's the thing that I think we're openly discussing.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it then.
Well, you guys can vote no. I mean, let's just put it on the table and we get to vote yes or no.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt my feelings.
And I'll stay out of it. You and I can stay out of it and leave it up to these three guys.
Okay.
All right, do that.
You gotta abstain when he says to vote. Can't do it ahead of time, you gotta, when he, when he says he's gonna.
Do a roll call.
So it was, okay.
What's a motion to approve the hotel expenses for the extra night that Nancy?
Now Ryan, can you answer this for us before we vote? Because this occurred before the end of the fiscal year. Because it would have been, the bill would have been for a night before the end of the fiscal year. There's money in our budget, correct, for board services stuff? Do you know if the money is there? Was there enough?
Not off the top of my head, I trust.
I mean, it's gonna be a matter of two twenty-five plus those fees. I think it ends up being like two hundred and eighty bucks a night if, I'm just, something like that. It's gonna be in that ballpark. So you're, you're less than six hundred dollars is my point.
Yeah, you know, it rolls off by the functions.
Yeah.
So it's not by line items, so I can trust you.
So that's, I just want to be sure we're okay. I don't want to, we're something up.
Hey, but one thing I want to mention too, normally anytime we do, uh, when we go on a conference like this, we usually get literature. I didn't get any literature this time, except for that, and I was really grateful that I had even that. But I mean, I'd been there before, so I knew how to get there, but we really should be getting our literature and I'm gonna get a hold of Mac and find out why they didn't send anything to us. Usually you get a booklet, it tells you all the different things that's gonna be going on and you can kind of pick ahead of time and. Um, it's just, you know, it's just easier to have that ahead of time. I didn't, because I've been, I mean, I must have been to. Traverse City and conferences. I've been on the board twenty-five years, at least twenty times in the last twenty-five years. And so.
And I will say, there was very little, you couldn't, it was, you had to. Look hard to find what the agenda was and when we actually had to be there, because I know I talked with you, Dave, about. It was confusing. What time do we actually have to be there for the conference? And I mean, it wasn't clear in their, their. Uh, what they sent us in the emails about it, so.
Yeah, that's right.
To the bottom line and figure out we didn't need to be there Tuesday at once. That's why we left when we did.
Yeah, well, normally I would have read it, but I just, I just assumed it's always the same. And so it hasn't been the same every year. This is the first time it had changed, where it wasn't on a Monday. And usually they start like in the morning, like ten o'clock. So you had to get up really early to get the, and always two, before I always went the night before. And I used to be with, when I was on the, the Board for Mental Health. That's when, that's a lot of times when I went. And a bunch of us used to go up, we shared a room and, you know, it was just, it wasn't that expensive, but. Um, anyway, this time it had really changed and that's my fault. I just assumed, and I should never assume on this, on this board. Need to see it. So anyway, and I'm not blaming anybody either. I'm gonna call Mac and ask them next time, can they send us some literature on it? So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Ready?
Ready.
Commissioner Bailey.
Oh.
Commissioner Bunting.
Abstain.
Commissioner Gay.
Stay.
Commissioner Sopsey.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Owens.
No.
So I'll turn to my miles. I had a four hundred, I changed, turned up three hundred forty, go to three hundred thirty. Can I turn it on my miles? That's four hundred and a half miles.
See you.
Okay. So we'll have, we'll pay.
Any additional public comment? Do we need to?
I move. Their consideration to go into closed session under. I'm just see go. Uh, M C L one five point two six eight. Strategy and negotiations section.
One by Tim, supported by George, to leave this meeting and go into closed session for contract negotiations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay?
Yeah.
Good night.
Be safe.
Tom.
Bye.